All right, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call today's August 22nd meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners, I almost said coroners, commissioners to order. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, any public announcements from staff today? Or the other commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Is there any public comment from folks in the audience today on items not on today's agenda? This is your opportunity, if there's anything other than what is already on the agenda, which will have its own opportunity for public comment, this is your opportunity to comment on anything else. Okay, seeing none. Our current claims list, and this would be claims received by the Commissioner's office from August 5th through August 14th of this year, total $3,190,848.83. Just a couple of housekeeping items. As you came in the door, on the table in the back, there is a sign-in sheet. If you did not sign in coming in, please do so as you exit. It's great to have the proper spelling of people's names, particularly if you testify. Also, if you have cell phones, please turn those either off or to vibrate mode. That would be great and would be less distracting for everyone. And at the appropriate time when I call for public comment on each specific either discussion or action item, or during a public hearing, please come on up to the mic. Turn the mic on, make sure it's green. The light is green. State your name for the record, and please do keep your comments to three minutes or less. Brevity and succinctness is certainly valued here. So, we have a number of public hearings today, some of which are continuations of public hearings that we opened previously. And then we have one non-action item on the agenda, listed under "Other Business," which will kick off a discussion on a topic that will take actual action on at a later date. So, our first public hearing, which is a continuation of a public hearing that we opened a few weeks ago, is on the Marco Flats Footbridge Road Petition. And Sam, we're going to defer to our surveyor, Steve Nyde, for our road viewers' report. Come on up, Steve.
Thank you, Commissioners. Steve Nyde, Surveyor's Office. I am hoping and expecting for a nice, quiet hearing today on the road petitions. And I will read the viewers' report. The date of viewing was August 15th, 2019. In attendance was Juanita Vero, Missoula County Commissioner, and myself, Steve Nyde. At approximately 5:00 PM, the attendees arrived at the site of the subject road right-of-way. An investigation and discussion ensued. No public access to public land would be eliminated if this right-of-way is abandoned. The undersigned road viewers recommend abandoning that portion of the road right-of-way affected by the Order Quieting Title filed May 18, 2017, by the Montana Fourth Judicial District Court, Department Number One, Cause Number BV-17-155. That's the end of the report.
Thank you very much. Juanita, you were on the road viewers' trip. Anything you would like to add?
Do you guys have any questions? This was pretty straightforward.
Any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, and like I say, it's a continuation of the hearing we opened here a while back, prior to the road viewers heading out into the field. Is there any public comment on this petition, on this road petition related to the Marco Flats Footbridge? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Any questions or further discussion or emotion on the part of the Commission?
I move to abandon that portion of the road right-of-way affected by the Order Quieting Title filed May 18th, 2017, by the Montana Fourth Judicial District Court.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, that carries. Our second item is similar to the last in that we opened the public hearing on the Pine Drive Road Petition a while back, and there was subsequently a trip up there to take a look at it in person, and a subsequent road viewers' report. And Mr. Nyde, would you like to present that?
Yes, I would. So, on that same day, August 15th, 2019, we had a group of people attend the viewing. Juanita Vero, again, myself, Rosemary Harrison, Jeanette McKee, Bob Cappas, I believe is the pronunciation, Lynn Cappas, Sandra Bergerson, Jean Curtis, and Bill O'Brien. At approximately 3:30 PM, the attendees congregated at the site of the subject road right-of-way. An investigation and discussion ensued. Since the landowners of the property underlying the proposed right-of-way are seeking damages, it was decided to postpone our recommendation pending an appraisal of the property. That appraisal will be paid for by the Sealy Lake Sewer District and should be completed before the end... That's not quite right. I just... Late-breaking information, September the 6th. But I should finish reading the report. Appraisal will be paid by the Sealy Lake Sewer District and should be completed before the end of this month. And as I just interjected, Jean Curtis just said September 6th for the appraisal. At that time, we'll have a better idea of what they're asking for, for damages, and we can proceed based on that number.
Okay, thank you. So, in light of that, we will not be taking action on this today, but we'll wait to see what the appraisal yields and what the next steps would be. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come up and testify on this item? Ms. Curtis?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jean Curtis. I serve as the District Manager for the Sealy Lake Sewer District Board. And as you know, the district petition for this right-of-way to be established is needed for the new public sewer system that will be built in Sealy Lake next year. However, it's also a benefit for other utilities that serve Sealy Lake, namely the Sealy Lake Water District, the Missoula Electric, Cotton, Blackfoot Telephone. So, it has been an interesting journey of how... Because the folks that own it didn't know they owned it. So, thanks to Shira and Sam for their due diligence there. So, that leads us to today. We did meet on-site. Those who joined were not opposed to establishing the right-of-way, and the shared owners would like to be compensated for the right-of-way. So, the district has contracted with Stevens and Associates to do an appraisal and establish the value of the easement. Their report to the district will be complete September 6th. The district has a budget to purchase easements, and once that value is established, the owners will have that value to consider. They may want cash or an exchange of a value of sewer connection stubs to those small lots, but because the appraisal's not complete, I can't tell you what will happen. But in talking with the three owners, we are, of course, operating in good faith. Today, the Commission can decide to accept the sewer petition and grant the public right-of-way contingent on the sewer board, and owners come into an agreement and then recess... Or recess the meeting, which it sounds like is the recommendation, until the owners have seen the appraisal and we establish an agreement with the sewer district. I would ask that if you do continue the hearing, that you move it to your first meeting in September, if at all possible, so that I can take your decision to the Sealy Lake Sewer Board on September 19th. So, that's my only request today, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jean. That would be September 5th, I believe, if we scheduled it for the first public meeting in September for us. Is that what you're requesting, Jean?
Right, your earliest meeting.
Okay, okay, thanks.
But we won't have the information.
Steve, do you want to clarify... Steve or Jean, do you want to clarify when's the appraisal going to be completed?
By the 6th, the latest. So, I was thinking that your meeting was the next week. What days are your meetings?
No. Emmy?
In September, we only have September 6th right now. Yeah.
You mean the 5th.
You mean the 5th?
I mean the 5th. September 5th, yes.
Yeah, we are...
It's the only meeting in September right now.
So, that puts us clear on...
Well, is there any... Let's give some thought to this. I don't see any reason why we could not, if necessary, take action at an admin meeting, which is also a public meeting, if it was time-sensitive. Steve?
Just maybe just go ahead and schedule it for your regular scheduled meeting, and then, as she said, at the latest, so maybe we'll get it before then. And if we don't, we just continue it again.
Okay, let's do that. We'll put it on the agenda. If we can take action on the 5th, we will. If we can't, for some reason, we'll try to see how creative we can get. Okay, thank you. Is there any additional public comment on this particular road petition? Okay, seeing none. We will continue this public hearing until September 5th. Next, we have a continuation of another series of public hearings. These related to the fiscal year 2020 Missoula County Budget. As many of you... Well, I won't say many. As some of you may know, and if you don't, you will now, our final budget hearing has been postponed to one week from today. Our finance staff, given some of the changes in our budget process this year, have requested an additional week to make sure that all of our figures are in alignment with departmental budgets, and as such, this still falls within our statutory requirements for when we need to adopt a budget for local government. So, the final Missoula County Budget Hearing for fiscal year 2020 will be next Thursday, same time, same place. And that will include the items listed on your agenda, including the budget itself, permissive medical levy, sheriff's retirement levy, public employees' retirement system levy, and rural special improvement district budgets. But having said that, we are taking comment on the budget still. So, if you're here to speak on the budget, even though we don't have the final budget for your viewing today, feel free to come on up to the microphone and provide us your public comment on the fiscal year 2020 budget. Okay. Mayor Ingean, would you like to comment on the county budget?
Okay.
Okay, the mayor of Missoula would not. So, we will keep the public hearing on the budget open, and like I say, the final budget hearing will be next Thursday. So, with that, we'll move into an item which is a no-action item today, but will be an overview of a proposal to possibly grant or deed a portion of 2340 Mullen Road for low-income and supportive housing, and this would be a parcel of land next to the detention facility. And we will begin with staff reports from County CAO Vicki Zire, Deputy County Attorney Anna Conley, and Heather McMillan, who's the Housing Development Director from Homeward. Vicki?
Good afternoon. I'm Vicki Zire, the Chief Administrative Officer for Missoula County. As Commissioner Strohmeyer stated, Anna Conley will address the legal issues that we were asked to provide information to the Commissioners. We hope to have a Sheriff's Office representative give their opinion on the property, and then the developers will do a presentation.
Vicki, could you pull the mic just a little bit closer, please? Thank you.
Is that better? Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, final decision is scheduled for the public hearing on September 5th. Today would be the opening of the public hearing. So, on July 11th, staff was directed to include in a staff report what would be the property boundary, what is the process required to establish this boundary, and who would be the entity responsible for taking the property through the process, the legal analysis required to deed or grant the land, a legal analysis on the previous jail bond election, and any restrictions that may go with that land due to the bond election. What role will the county play in decisions related to housing programming and services provided on the property, and what is the appropriate legal document in which to capture that role? So, from there, obviously, on September 5th, we would provide any additional information that we received from public comment. So, the property boundary information, this is the current boundary of the Missoula County Detention Facility and the property beside it. This is also known as 2340 Mullen Road. This is the legal document that shows the description of the property, which is currently Parcel 2A of COS 4878. The available space that Steve Nyde did a rough draft of what was available, providing some space, and I'm going to point to it here with my pointer, this space here is being reserved for the Missoula County Sheriff's Office for future office space. The additional... The available space that you may consider is the 5.10 acres that is shown on this map. Now, this is still a draft, because we would need official survey done on the property. The Sheriff's Office, I believe, has walked the property that is in discussion, and they would like to make sure that they reserve an emergency exit or a right-of-way that is that they can use as an emergency exit in case there was an emergency at the detention 21 years ago... Oops, our map doesn't show. I had a map here. I'm going to have... I'm going to go back to this one. Actually, I'm going to go a few back. So, oops. This mouse... Someone said that last time. So, growth that was projected, and what two pods appeared to be added in the future for growth would have been, and I'll show you here, there would have been a pod here that was drawn on the... On a map several years ago, and also here, for additional growth at the detention center. As you can see, those pods would still fit within the boundary if you were to give up the 5-point-whatever acres or less. Process to establish a boundary for the proposed housing unit would be the responsibility of the developer. The developer will be required to obtain approach permits from Montana Department of Transportation for Broadway and Mullen Road, and the developer will be required to comply with all architectural and juvenile detention-related standards. The last item that I would like to address is regarding the county role to determine what housing programming will be provided on the property. It is staff's recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners describe formally what they believe low-income housing means for the purposes of donating the land. And now, I'll turn it over to Anna.
Ms. Conley.
How are you today?
We are excellent today.
Good. So, the... We were asked to look at two things. The first is the method of conveyance, which is a way of just asking, how do we actually transfer this? What would the deed or the buy-sell or lack of buy-sell, since it's a donation, what would that look like? And the second question is, is there a issue with regard to the bond election that we use to obtain the property and obtain the funds to build this structure that would be an impediment to this donation? So, I'd first like to talk about the method of conveyance. This is a new statute that, to my knowledge, hasn't been used yet, and it explicitly allows a county to donate property for a multifamily housing development operated by a corporation for low-income housing. But the statute also specifies that the land that's transferred must be used to permanently provide low-income housing. And the statute says that the transfer of the property may contain a reversionary clause to reflect this condition. So, what does that mean, a reversionary clause? It means that it says, if you don't use this permanently as low-income housing, the ownership of the land we're donating to you will revert back to Missoula County. Fancy term for this is fee simple to feasible interest, which means you have the land, you own it, but we'll get it back if you don't do what we said you need to do with it. It's my opinion that this interest should be reflected in a buy-sell agreement, and again, I'm not exactly sure if it's a buy-sell agreement since it's a donation, but whatever the actual contract that makes the transfer would be, as well as the deed that's recorded that's transferring ownership, that that condition and reversionary interest should be in there. So, there's five different ideas that I came up with as potential ways that you could transfer this property. The first would be a reversion by operation of law. And what that means is, at the moment that the land ceases to be used for low-income housing, as a matter of law, the ownership of it transfers back to the county. Practically speaking, it would require that you file a quiet title action or something like that to get a declaration that it has occurred, but why this is sort of the simplest is because you don't need to provide notice or trigger some type of process in order for, as a matter of the law, as a matter of law, the interest to revert back to you. The second option would be a reverter by condition subsequent. The only difference here is that it would require that you actually provide notice. So, for example, say, hey, owner, hey, developer, you are not using this as low-income housing. We're providing you notice that it's now going to revert back to the county. Another couple other options we kicked around would be a buyback option. Essentially, this would mean if they ever cease to use it as something other than low-income housing, then they would have to pay you the fair market value of the land at the time that they ceased to use it. That would require, though, that whoever owns it at the time has the money to pay you, and so it would make an assumption that you would have someone who would have the assets for that buyback. Another option would be putting a penalty in there. You have to pay the county X amount of dollars if you cease to use it as low-income housing. Again, this would assume that the developer or owner has assets to pay at the time that they cease to use it as low-income housing. And another option would be to simply donate the land without any reverter whatsoever. This would provide no protection against other types of use, and I'm not sure that it's really what the statute envisions with regard to this type of donation, since the statute clearly provides a clawback mechanism. Out of these five options, I would recommend the first one, which is just reverts by operation of law. The reason I like this one is because the county doesn't have to take any steps or provide notice in order to trigger the reversion by operation of law. Again, practically, we have to file a quiet title, but it's the simplest as far as getting that reversionary interest back. Once you got it back, you could sell it or take other steps, whatever you wanted to do. I think it's most in keeping with the statute that allows the donation. You don't have to take any further steps, and you don't have to worry about a judgment-proof owner who might not be able to pay you fair market value or pay a penalty if they cease to use it as low-income housing. Also, if you did a penalty option, some penalties are looked upon unfavorably in the law, so we wouldn't have any concerns about that if we just did the reverter by operation of law. So, that's my recommendation with regard to the method of conveyance. Then there's the issue of the bond. On August 6th, 1996, the Commissioners called an election, and I'm just going to read this quote, "For the purpose of voting on the question of whether or not the Board shall be authorized to issue and sell general obligation bonds of the county in the amount of $17,100,000." This is the key language, "for the purpose of acquiring land for designing, constructing, installing, equipping, and furnishing permanent adult and juvenile detention facilities." Then, on November 5th, there was an election. Same language was used for the election, and ultimately, the electorate authorized the issuance and sale of the bonds. Then, the property, which is just about 21 and 1/2 acres, was purchased by Missoula County in 1997 for just under $4 million. And the bonds hadn't been issued yet, although the election had authorized the issuance of them. So, ultimately, what the land was purchased was a bond anticipation note, which is essentially a note anticipating that you will get bonds issued. So, then, on April 8th, 1998, the bonds were issued, and again, they were issued for the same purpose that's already stated on the notice and in the election ballot. The detention center was built. The bonds and the debt service have been fully paid and are no longer being taxed. So, it's fully paid. No more of this debt on anyone's taxes. So, if you look at the state law regarding bonds, there's a notice requirement, which makes sense, that a notice of a bond election requires that you tell the electorate what you're going to use the money for. And in addition to the notice requirements, 772260 says, "All money arising from the sale of the bonds shall be paid to the County Treasurer and shall be immediately available for the purpose for which the bonds were issued and for no other purpose." My sense is that 2260 is used so that you can't say, we're going to use the bonds for X, and then ultimately, you get the money and you use it for Y. So, here, all the notice requirements were fully met. All of the bond amount was used as stated in the election and as stated in all the other notices. The entire bond amount was used to purchase the property and to build the detention center, and the bond is fully paid. Neither state law nor the bond language require that every square foot of the entire land purchased be used for a detention center. And detention has changed since 1998. How we think about detention, how we think about detention alternatives have changed, and there's nothing that requires that we use every square foot of it forevermore for detention as envisioned in 1998. In my opinion, to require a local government to never repurpose or expand on assets or land that were purchased with bonds would be an inefficient use of taxpayer funds, and I don't see the law requiring the county to do that. I also understand that there are a number of alternatives to detention and resources for jail diversion in this planned project, including sustainable housing, substance abuse, and mental health treatment. So, I think even if there were a requirement, that there be a detention-related use for this land, I think that requirement would be met in the current understanding of how this project is going to go forward. So, my conclusion is that I don't believe that there is an issue relating to the bond that would impede this donation.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Did you have any questions before we move on? Or... Sure.
Thanks a lot for the thorough explanation, first. So, on the method of conveyance, do we need to build in some mechanism to determine over time that affordable housing is actually being met?
Yeah, and I think that gets back to Vicki's point about what does... What do you want to see when you say you want permanent low-income housing? My understanding is that this project is going to have some low-income housing and have some jail diversion treatment programming and things like that, so that some percentage of the housing or the ultimate structure improvements will be low-income. So, whether you make it a percentage amount, or whether you make it a square foot amount, or however you quantify what you want to see when you say permanent low-income housing, you may also want to have some type of monitoring mechanism, some type of certification every few years or something like that. That's a good idea.
Great, that's what I was imagining. Thanks.
Thank you. Heather, are you out there? Do you want to come on up?
It was on here.
Okay, slight diversion from the agenda.
I am not Heather.
It's okay. Sheriff McDermott?
Thank you. Well, I'm here today to just let you know that I fully support this project, that the Sheriff's Office is all in, and we're happy to support any project that offers creative solutions. solutions to address homelessness, which of course is directly related to jail overcrowding, which has been a real issue for public safety in our community. One of the things I'm most proud of is the jail diversion master plan that was adopted by the city of Missoula and Missoula County. And that plan called out a need for housing options, specifically permanent supportive housing. So if the sheriff's office can be a part of this solution by donating a little bit of land for those in need and those that truly need a place to live, we're happy to support this project. Had the opportunity to meet a lot of the folks that are involved in this project. Many of them are here today. They've been great. They've included my staff, both from downtown and its detention, in the project. We've been able to communicate, provide input about the planning and the design. And this is where the idea of having an emergency access to the rear of the property came about. And those conversations will continue. But it's been very well received and greatly appreciated by all of us at the sheriff's office to be involved in the process, and we look forward to seeing it succeed. When we talk about homelessness, I think it's also important to talk about addiction and mental health aspects of that as well. And those talks have been underway also. So that's been good to hear. So I support the project. I applaud the city and county leadership for taking a look at this issue and trying to bring a solution forward that addresses this very critical need.
Thanks, TJ. Now Heather McMillan, come on up. Or your proxies. Okay.
Can we just say development team? Sorry, we didn't actually have an opportunity to weigh into the agenda about how we were going to schedule in the speakers. All right. Great. Ready for me to start? Great, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andrea Davis. I'm the executive director of Homeward, one of three members of the development team and who are really excited to be able to present to you today in regards to the proposed project that is under consideration for the disposition of land. Additionally, I want to thank the county staff, as well as the county attorney's office and Sheriff McDermott and his staff for being just really great to work with and very available in terms of questions. It's been a really open dialogue, and we look forward to continue working in that kind of environment going forward. I also want to acknowledge particularly for the public that we have written up an executive summary that has quite a bit of detail. We did submit that as part of the public record, and it's available, I believe, for you today. I want to just go ahead and quickly introduce who the development team is, starting with Homeward. We are in our 25th year of operation. We have created or preserved over 1,000 homes across the state of Montana. At this point, 1,028 homes for more than 1,600 Montanans. That's at 27 different properties in 11 different communities in the state of Montana. 346 of those homes are located here in Missoula. Secondly, the Missoula Housing Authority is part of our development team, and they are currently serving over 1,600 people in the various homes that they provide here in Missoula. They own and operate three properties that already have a supportive service component. And it's important to point this out, that they're already serving very vulnerable residents within properties that they own. That includes the Uptown Apartments. I know I mentioned that the last presentation that we gave here, just right here on Woody, the Valor House, which is located actually very close to the detention center property, and then Cornerstone, which is all beyond that same property, and it's currently under construction. And since the Housing Authority has administered a tenant-based voucher program or permanent supportive housing voucher program since 1995. So these are the kind of vouchers that are going to be utilized for the 30 permanent supportive homes at this site. And Lori Davidson with the Housing Authority will go into greater detail. And to elaborate on that, the tenant-based assistance is what allows financial assistance for about 100 formerly homeless families to be able to afford a home here in Missoula. Lastly, the third member of our development team is Blue Line Development. They were established in 2011, and they've developed over 1,000 homes and particularly 1,037 homes in 24 properties across much of our western region, Colorado, Wyoming, Montana, Utah, and Minnesota. And of the 24 properties that Blue Line has developed, four of those are similar in size and complexity to what is being proposed as part of this scattered site project in Missoula. So this project is Trinity Apartments Limited Liability Limited Partnership. What it is, is 200 homes on two different pieces of property here in Missoula. The first is the Cooley Block. That is currently zoned for 70 homes for families and the type of apartments that we plan to build there are for families and Missoula's workforce. Homeward just acquired this Cooley property on Monday. So that piece of property is secure and ready to go and put into this project. The Mullen Street site, obviously that's under consideration for you today, is a combination of low threshold and supportive housing options. 30 of those will be supportive housing homes. 100 of those apartments located on the Mullen site will be for individuals and families. And there will be a navigation center built onsite to support residents, and it operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There will be no lines outside in the evening, and guests are not going to exit onto the street in the morning because it is open 24 hours a day. This, again, is just a map showing where the two sites are located. Scattered site, but we obviously are going to build it in as one large project in terms of the financial feasibility of the project. So to that end, I want to speak to you again, I know we've presented this in the past, but I want to mention again that this is part of a 4% non-competitive housing credit project. That includes tax-exempt financing. That is through the state Montana Board of Housing, and the credits are a federal housing credit. The scale of this project is truly what makes this feasible. And in addition, because we're utilizing this financing tool, we can actually use this to build, to literally construct, the navigation center. So we don't have to go out there and do a capital campaign to raise money and get donated dollars to build the navigation center that'll be part of this. It will be financed as part of this package. It will include federal and private grant dollars. We'll be working with our local jurisdictions here, as well as the state of Montana, on those resources. There is no local tax dollars currently planned for this development. And very importantly, $1 million from the project financing will be set aside for a social service reserve. Nate Richman with Blue Line Development can talk more specifically to the success of that structure later in terms of other projects that he has built in Colorado. But that is a very important backstop to ensure that we've got the feasibility of services for the long term. So the three areas I really wanted to call out in terms of policy and why this project really brings together three very important policies in our community, first being a place to call home, meeting Missoula's housing needs. The city of Missoula just passed a city housing policy. And this project, way back in the back of the housing policy, it identifies five-year strategic goals. And it stipulates that we need almost 600 rental homes that are affordable to people that are earning under 60% of the area median income. And I indicated on this slide that that's about $32,000 a year. And so it's $32,000 and below, we need 600 homes in the next five years, new homes, not just preserved, but new homes. And so by the time there are some other projects in the pipeline that are already built, and then by the time Trinity goes online, we'll be 70% on our way to that goal. So this project clearly helps meet the goals identified in the community-adopted city housing plan. Additionally, this project meets the goals identified in reaching home our 10-year planned and homelessness. It builds on the momentum to prevent homelessness whenever possible. And when it's still occurring, then otherwise, we want to ensure that it is rare, it is brief, and it is a one-time-only experience. And so that's really the critical nature of a navigation center with this collaborative element, is really making sure that we're utilizing resources wisely and that we're collaborating in a way that we can really make sure that we are, again, preventing when we can homelessness and otherwise ensuring it's rare, brief, and a one-time-only experience. And then lastly, this project does achieve goals that were identified in the Missoula County Jail Diversion Master Plan. Within that plan, I thought this was an interesting quote. It states, "The community is spending enough money in emergency services for this population to invest strategically in proactive services that will reduce the need for high-cost emergency responses." In the 2018 update to the Jail Diversion Master Plan, it goes on to further say that there is a critical need to provide not only the social service aspect, but also the critical homes that are needed for those that are experiencing homelessness, in particular, chronic homelessness. And so, again, after there's been some time to assess the, I would say, the success of that diversion master plan, this project only furthers, I believe, the strategies of that plan. With that, I would like to invite Lori Davidson up to the podium. She's the executive director of the Missoula Housing Authority, and she'll speak further to the navigation center and particularly the folks that will be served through there. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. Ms. Davidson.
Thank you, Andrea. And thank you, commissioners, for allowing us this time to come and present this exciting project to the community and to you. I am the executive director of the Missoula Housing Authority. And at the Housing Authority, we view access to stable, attainable housing for everyone as a community responsibility and a basic human right. And we've been working toward that vision since 1978. And currently, we serve over 1,600 families who are living in a home they can afford with MHA's assistance. We are experienced at serving of vulnerable individuals and families. Andrea mentioned two of our projects, the Uptown and Valor House. And our soon-to-be-built Cornerstone project is the third project. Those will total 43 units that are specifically targeted towards this vulnerable population. And in addition, we've been administering what we refer to as shelter plus care. HUD calls it something different now, but we're kind of attached to shelter plus care. So this is the tenant-based permanent supportive housing voucher that is serving about 100 formerly homeless families. And what we've found over the years is one of the highest hurdles that these families see after they get their voucher is simply the ability to find a place to rent. So Trinity will be able to welcome them home because we're going to place 30 of these vouchers in the Mullen Road site. Another 100 of the homes on the Mullen Road site will be what we call low-threshold homes. And this is where we'll accept people where they are and provide them with a safe and supportive environment where they can become stable and become contributing members to society. These homes will target individuals who are at 70% or less of median income. That is about $41,000 for a family of two. That 70% of income limit varies with family size. The supportive housing model that we're talking about typically combines small apartments with intensive case management and supportive services. It's been proven to reduce the use of publicly-funded crisis services, like jails and police departments and hospitals and emergency rooms. And it's proven to reduce chronic homelessness by about 30% nationwide. It costs a taxpayer about an average of $36,000 a year to support a chronically homeless person. But these costs can be reduced by almost 50% when we can place these people in a supportive housing environment. So Trinity will also include an onsite navigation center to provide intensive supportive services. I think this is one of the most exciting parts of this project. It's something that most of us who work in the affordable housing field and who've been service providers for many years, we've been working on this for more than five years to try and find a place to have something like the navigation center. It'll be open to the public 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And navigation centers are considered best practice in serving people who are living on shelters or in encampments. We can get them off the street, and we can get them on a pathway to a safe, healthy home. This is a critical part of the solution in Missoula's homelessness crisis response system. We're actively engaged in discussions with local service providers to design a robust service model that addresses the many challenges that this population faces every day. These services can include life skills training. That might be income management, medication management, job training. We'll have an onsite medical clinic, and we'll be able to provide prison and jail reentry support, mental health, substance abuse, and behavioral health support, and be able to address food insecurity. The developer partners for Trinity, MHA Homeward and Blue Line, as Andrea mentioned, we've agreed to set aside $1 million to supplement the operating cost of the navigation center, just to be sure that it's going to operate smoothly into the future in case we run into bumps along the way. So we have this unique opportunity with Trinity for partnerships and access to resources that are unlike anything else that we have in Missoula. The city of Missoula, Missoula County, affordable housing developers and service providers, we're all working collaboratively toward this common goal to close this existing gap in our services. And we're very excited to take on this ambitious project and to work with our seasoned partners at Homeward and Blue Line, to work with the county and the city. And we especially want to thank the county commissioners for your commitment to providing affordable housing and the sheriff's department, specifically Sheriff McDermott, Under Sheriff Rich Maricelli, and Jason Kowalski, who've been extremely helpful to us in how we discuss how to move forward with the design of the project so that we can be good neighbors. And with that, I want to introduce Heather McMillan, the director of development at Homeward, who's going to talk a little bit about the design of the project, or at least what we know so far.
Thanks, Lori. At long last, Heather.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Appreciate the time on this. The good news is I'm going to show pictures and use less words, so please, take a look at the screens. As we indicated, and have said multiple times, this is a scattered site project. So again, showing the adjacency, but go ahead and flip, Carissa. We worked with staff, had the meeting, I believe Vicki spoke to that. There was kind of a bit of a trick to define the edges of this parcel, what was available in general. And true to our commitment, the team has been working with partners to identify and reduce down the site itself to a feasible project scale. So we did a bit of an exercise with Encompass, making sure that we could get things to fit, having conversations with the county sheriff's department, they've been fabulous, and also with the priority of preserving as much usable land as possible for future county needs. Go ahead and turn that again, Carissa. By all means, we still have meets and bounds and all those things to draw, but we feel like we have isolated the site needed from the little over six acres to around four or a little less acreage. The pink indicates discussions that we had directly with the county sheriff's office. The existing bulb there is a road and a turnaround area for the detention facility at this point, but they had requested an access point out onto Broadway. And so we're indicating deeding that or isolating that parcel to get that emergency egress out to Broadway, which is a bit of a trick because that's a state road, and we'll have to do a few pieces. But this means that the sheriff's department can get in and out of their facility quickly when they need to, and also in case of emergency evacuation, this was critical. So that edge, plus the pink that runs horizontal there, is kind of a double fence line that we talked about with the county sheriff's office, you know, just trying to have a visible space, a safety space in between the two properties, access point. It seemed to be good practice, and something that we both agreed would be a good piece to that. The orange block indicates what we think is a far more usable space for future county needs. You have a parking lot adjacency, and part of what we're showing here is another access onto Mullen Road. So go ahead and switch. So for us to be able to say, yes, this is a feasible site, we wanted to make sure that we could fit a building with the homes that we've proposed. And so what we have indicated is by no means official, but it does prove that the site that we've isolated can work, and that we have been working with view sheds. You can see very light red arrows that don't show up very great on that screen, that trying to take the views from the apartments and looking away, different directions, not directly at the detention center. And any full architectural, we would work with the juvenile and detention facility design standards and adjacencies. You can go ahead and advance. We also... We also wanted to illustrate to you that in this design, we were thinking about the 100 homes that we're proposing as apartments would be in the blue, and then the drop-off navigation center and those 30 permanent supportive homes would be on the green wing. Again, these look like hard lines set in stone, but we'd continue to work with the county, with staff, to make sure that we're working through circulation, through site access, you know, a new access out onto Mullen over the ditch, sounds easier than it is, but then also out onto Broadway. So these are logistics that we'll need to sit and walk through with the county staff because this will require, and if we're all in agreement, and we are lucky enough to receive a county donation of land, we'd work with you to define those meets and bounds and what works for everybody's long-term use of the site. The other thing that I would like to commit to you at this point, if we are lucky enough to receive the donation and move forward with the project, is that we will work with you on a deed restriction that works in complementary to what we have to put onto the project from Montana Board of Housing. There's a 46-year deed restriction promising and committing to the federal IRS and the state that will be low-income housing for those 46 years. So you can build or complement that, and you'll have that as a guarantee, and you guys can arm wrestle on who gets to be in first position on title. That's a whole nother conversation. And then there's also a lot of compliance that we do that we prove to them and all of the other agencies or funding sources that we are meeting and serving those populations. And so we would be happy to provide reports along the way as necessary on going both short-term and long-term. So I'm available with any questions, but now I'm going to pass the mic off last to Nate Richmond with Blue Line to talk a little bit about the financing model.
Thanks, Heather.
Good afternoon. I'm Nate Richmond with Blue Line Development, and while Heather promised pictures and fewer words, I'm just going to take the fewer words tact. Our primary role in a development like this is the financing. We're sort of the number crunchers working on spreadsheets. So our secondary role is to bring together all of the necessary partners in making a supportive housing development work. We're utilizing our experience on previous developments to do that. As Andrea mentioned in her introduction, we've worked on four, or have completed four developments that are similar in complexity to this. Most of those are in Colorado and Utah, and we have three others in development in addition to those. So this will be our eighth supportive housing development. Really, this will be the first one I've worked on in my hometown of Missoula. I should have mentioned Blue Line is based here in Missoula. I've been a Western Montana resident since 1994, so I'm thrilled to be working at home and not getting on an airplane for a change. So in terms of this development, the one we've sort of modeled after is a Royal Village, which is 130-unit development based in Denver. 35 of those are supportive homes with project-based subsidy, and 95 are workforce homes serving people making 60% and below of the area median income. In addition to that, we have developed a 50-bed homeless shelter as part of that development. And I think there is a group from here involved in this development that will be touring that next month. And so we've taken sort of what we've done there and improved upon it for this one. That was sort of our test case. The timeline of this development, and this is always subject to change, given the financing we apply for, whether we get it our first try or not, we're looking at putting our 4% tax credit application into the Montana Board of Housing in September, and we're looking at spring of next year doing additional funding applications, and that will be for home and other potential affordable housing program from the Federal Home Loan Bank and various other sources that we identify. So in a perfect world, spring of 2021, we start construction with an approximate 18-month build-out, and so we're hoping after all said and done in early 2022, we can be moving people in and have the property occupied. And I'm happy to answer any questions relating to the financing, the development timeline, or anything else based on our experience in other properties. So also, you have the Housing Authority and Homeward's info up here, so happy to answer any questions, otherwise.
Thank you.
Back to you. Yes.
And this is for, just for my own clarity, but also for everyone else listening too. So there's been mention of the scale of this property, or this project makes a type of low-income tax credit financing possible. It typically is really competitive. Could you just unpack that one more time for us and for the people in the audience? Because personally, that's really compelling to me, and I wanted to make sure everyone here understands.
Certainly, and I'll try to do it without sending people running for the door by boring them. There's two types of low-income housing tax credits, and it's a program administered by the IRS. There's the 9% credit, which is a competitive credit that the state of Montana has allocated around $3 million every year to hold a competitive funding cycle with. When you work through the tax-exempt bond structure that this development is working through, you automatically qualify for a 4% tax credit that is non-competitive and does not come out of the state's annual allocation. And to do that, you require a certain scale in the development to cover the cost of underwriting the bonds. There's certain, and with the bond issuance and the bond project, you have to have 50% of your total project costs as debt, and so the bond has to serve 50% of that. So you're, with a 9% credit, you're covering 70% to 80% of your total project cost with the sale of the credit. And I don't know if that makes sense or if I've just further sullied the issue, but...
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Nate. Appreciate it. Okay, this is a public hearing, which I'll open on the proposed donation of 2,340 Mullen Road for supportive or low-income housing and other services. So if anyone would like to comment on this, please don't hesitate and come on up to the microphone. And everyone, please state your name for the record also.
I'm Robert Sheeter, and I'm glad to be able to be before the board here. I want to come out and say that I'm not really opposed to the project as a whole. I may have some concerns, but where it does concern me is the donation of that particular piece of property. I am the, was the co-project manager for the development and the construction of the Missoula County Detention Facility. So I have some history as to what was going on, and I can tell you that during the bond issues, when we were doing the bond issues, and they were being proposed on some of the plans and stuff, when we were taking it to the public, showed that piece of property with the future being for like a Law and Justice Center or something to that. And many times, the people that were coming by was asking, what is that? We told them, and they were very pleased that the county was planning ahead that far so they don't have to repurchase land in order to expand the needs for the county. And in 19, I mean, I'm sorry, in 2008, there was a Law and Justice, you know, facility that we were kind of looking at out there, and that failed by 1%. And if everybody remembers what happened in 2008, that was when the financial crisis happened, and every, most people I talked to said I would have voted for it, but I was uncertain about what's the economy of the country. The problem that you got here is you've got property that is very key to anything that the county needs to do in the future. And this is the county as a whole, not just the urban area, you know, for either offices or anything else to be able, not to have the county start putting remote sites every place else. The property is, comes at a very high value, and the other problem is they were saying in this thing that there was no local tax dollars, but there is because taxpayers have already paid for that piece of property for future needs. If there is future needs for the county to expand and stuff, you're going to have to re-tax the taxpayers in order to accomplish that. The other issue I had is in the planning was that it was, the construction of the facility was pushed to the west so that piece of property would exist for the future of county needs and county expansion. The concerns I have about this particular project, apart from just the donation of the property, is that you have a regional problem with homeless. And the region goes beyond just Western Montana. It goes all the way to Spokane and Coeur d'Alene, where I have contacts and stuff that have told me that they're paying people, they're purchasing bus tickets to come to Missoula so they can take care of their homeless and take, and that's, and that's also happening in other cities. And so the approach of this doesn't rely on just being a local issue, it relies on a regional issue, and the solution to me has to be with getting with those other communities and have a regional solution so that Missoula doesn't just keep getting the influx of this, and it's an easy handout for other cities and stuff just to sit there and buy bus tickets to bring them here. So I think my three minutes is up, so I will...
Pretty close. Thank you. Additional public comment, come on up.
Commissioners, members of the audience, I'm Doug Chase. I was sheriff at the time this bond issue passed. It was frightening to see how long ago it was because now I know why I feel so aged. My main concern, and I contacted County Attorney Kirsten Paps, was to make sure that we did not violate the public's trust when we passed that bond issue. I think you have answered that question today, that there were no restrictions on, that mandatorily stated it had to be kept for the purpose of detention purposes. So that's my only concern, and other than perhaps the mayor might, no, he doesn't have any power at the Parking Commission. I thought maybe he might dismiss my parking ticket. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chase.
Hello there. My name is Mariah Ramirez. I'm actually from Helena. I am the Director for Community Impact at United Way, and I lead the coordinated entry system there. To speak to the question of this being a regional issue, I just want to alleviate some of the concern that might come with that. Myself and Teresa Williams are in almost constant contact discussing the regional nature of this issue. We've reached out to every lead of the coordinated entry system throughout the state, but we also have expanded our reach further than just Montana. So as far as, I know I can't speak to anything going on specifically in Missoula. I'm not a citizen of this town, but I am part of the working solution to try to alleviate some of these pressures throughout. And you do have a commitment from the Helena Coordinated Entry System that we aren't sending people your way as often as humanly possible. We try to serve people where we are. So just to throw that out there, this looks amazing. We're trying to work on similar projects in Helena to alleviate some of the pressure on those systems, so there you go.
Thank you. Folks from Helena are always welcome.
Thanks for making the trip.
Mayor Engen.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you. I fully expected that. And as is often the case, when I suggest that to folks at the lectern, I don't care. You may cut me off at three minutes, however, sir. Bit of housekeeping, I am in, I'm in receipt of a letter from the Invest Health team, including Lisa Baskevich, Laval Means, Karen Myers, Kaia Peterson, and Susan Hay Patrick in Support a Project, and I will leave that with you all and won't read that. So if you, if you're like me and have a relatively short attention span, and you were to read the Missoula Ten Year Plan to End Homelessness, you would only have to get to page two to see two critical strategies. One is all about ensuring that we have coordinated entry, that we know who is at risk or is homeless in our community, and we identify those folks and move them through the system as quickly and elegantly as we possibly can. And number two is we need Housing First. This is a Housing First model all day long. It's on page two of our plan, and I would suggest to you that this is less a donation and more an investment in our community. This is the county's opportunity to invest in a program that has demonstrated success in communities around the nation to reduce homelessness and to reduce the both financial and social expense that is commensurate with homelessness. This is humane, it is elegant, it's innovative, and it's an opportunity. You know, I've heard the bus ticket baloney for 20 years, and frankly, whether somebody's giving somebody a bus ticket or not, we have people here who need help, and the only way they're going to get it is if we do something. Doing nothing is not an option, and this is a very important something. The financial package is remarkable, the costs are contained, the outcomes are predictable, and I would be grateful, as a resident of Missoula County, if you were to support this investment in taking care of people we need to take care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Engen. Additional comment, come on up. Surely there is someone out there who has not spoken yet who would like to. Okay, I see folks peeking around. City council members out there, anyone? We are not taking action today, so this is not your last opportunity to weigh in by a long shot. Okay, I knew someone would be enticed.
I wasn't planning on coming. I'm just waiting for the mayor because I've got a meeting with him, but okay.
Council Jones.
I think this is really exciting, and I'm very supportive, and I don't know that there are any fantastic spots sitting in Missoula County that we're just waiting for this to happen, so there's always going to be a history, and you have to look through that. But in the here and now, I think there are people that need help. And all winter long, for all of our meetings at City Council last winter, we had people come in and ask for help. And if we're not ever going to be able to help all of them, I would like to, but I think we should figure out what we can do, and this is a really strong step in that direction. And this here and now is our responsibility, so to the degree that we can do something, I'm very supportive of it. And 20 years from now, there will be different issues, and those people will have to figure that out at that point, but this is us right now. So thanks for your, thanks for spearheading this, and I hope it all comes through. Thanks.
Thank you, and that was Gwen Jones.
Jones, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Amy Allison Thompson, Executive Director of the Paparello Center. I just wanted to get up here and thank you all for considering this. As the Director of the Paparello Center, I can tell you that I see firsthand on a daily basis that we are in desperate need of more affordable housing in our community, and this is just that opportunity to move in that direction. So thank you so much for your consideration.
Thanks, Amy.
I'm Jim McGrath. I'm speaking actually as a resident in the area of the two parcels. I wasn't planning on speaking. I can speak to other issues. I do work at the Housing Authority, but I wanted to speak for a minute about the other part of this, which is the Cooley Block, as we're now calling it, where Skyview Trailer Park used to be, and now it's not. And if you've been over there, I live like two blocks from it, three blocks from it, it really needs to be addressed. And the highest and best use for it is going to be some sort of affordable housing that will serve my fellow citizens and become my neighbors. That project was very challenging to make happen until it was consolidated with this. And when that happened, and actually similarly, this project was as well, and as Nate kind of hinted, I don't know if it's clear or not, they're only going to work as a package because it's big enough. And when I saw that, I said, wow. Every once in a while, if you take many, 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 many problems and you put them all together, they're easier to solve. And so keep in mind that this is the county's opportunity also to support that important piece of neighborhood that I live in. Also, I'm obviously very close to the Mullen Street side, but, and so I want you to keep in mind that the elegance of being able to step up and solve not just one or two problems, but maybe three or four at the same time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Anyone else like to testify on this item today? Going once, going twice. Okay, we will continue this public hearing till September 5th, is that correct? And this is on the... And this is on the item of land donation slash investment in our community at 2340 Mullen Road. Any questions or comments from the Commission at this point on this item? Okay, any other business to come before the Commission today? See, yeah, Commissioner Slotnick.
Just a really small thing, I just want to thank all of you people who came to speak today. Great presentations, clarity of, an explanation of difficult topics, people who came from far away, people who are crazy busy and could be doing 15 other things. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I second that. Okay, with that, we will be adjourned.